Yes, thank you. If you would join with me in the pledge allegiance and then hopefully, yes, a prayer. Reverend Darrell, if you would, please.
Thank you. It's a great honor to be here today and it's a great honor to talk to God and have him be here as well. So let's pray. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we just praise you and give you glory and honor. We thank you, Lord God, that you're the God of all. The Father God, we know that you know all. And I thank you, Lord God, as I lift up Reno County, that Father, you know what's right, what's wrong, what needs to be fixed. And Father, we just pray for the mighty moving of the Holy Spirit within this community. That Father, it works on the leadership, it works on the employees within this county. That Father, everything is going to be better and better, not worse and worse. We thank you, Lord God, that there is tremendous power in prayer. And Father, as we pray today, in Jesus' name, for the blessings to flow. And we give you the praise and give you the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting. We seem to have drawn a pretty good crowd today. And with that, the next thing on our agenda would be a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week. Tom, you have any comments before we read it, or would you rather read it?
Go ahead and read it, and then I'll make my comments, if that would be okay with the commission.
I'd prefer you read it, but that's fine.
If you want me to, Commissioner, I can do that.
Put up with me, folks.
I will.
Whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and various varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. And whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support services and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. And whereas kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma, informed care that meets survivors where they are. And whereas through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. And whereas kinship reminds us of the strength that comes from connection, the importance of listening to every voice, the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. And whereas Reno County District Attorney's Office reaffirms our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and creating a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through 12th, 2025, as Reno County Crime Victims Rights Week. And the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County reaffirms the commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members within, community members, victim service providers, criminal justice professionals, who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. And then it calls for our signatures aboard. Tom, anything you want to add?
I appreciate very much the Board recognizing Victims Rights Week. In this county, we have striven for years and years to protect victims. We look a lot of times towards the victims of the most serious crimes. But my office protects victims from businesses who experience thefts, all the way up to the families of those who are murdered. So we really work hard in trying to do that. With me today is my deputy district attorney, Annie Davidson, and Sarah McReynolds, our Victim Rights Coordinator, who sets up meetings regularly for me and other attorneys in the office with victims, so that we can discuss their cases and have personal, and they can have personal input. We appreciate all the services that are within the county to support victims. Victims' rights are often put aside in the court system. We have a system that is designed to protect the defendant, and rightfully so. That's what our constitution demands of us. But we also have a system that allows victims oftentimes to be underserved and to be ridiculed for just for being victims. And we fight vigorously against that, and we hope that the community will support us in our efforts to protect the rights of victims. I would like to invite everyone here, especially the commission and the members of the administration of Reno County, to our candlelight lighting service tomorrow. It's at 6:30 at South Hutchinson Community Center. That's at 101 West Avenue C in South Hutch. Starts again at 6:30. I have been honored by the presence of members of the commission coming to this before, and I really appreciate those of you who take time to do that. And I think you'd be inspired by what you will hear there, and you will see the support that we give victims of crime in this county. So again, I appreciate your acknowledgement of this week, and ask that you continually support the office and pray for victims and their families as we seek justice for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Fellow commissioners, I would encourage you to take time to go to this meeting, the candlelight service. It's very meaningful. You will hear some, an very interesting talk by a person who's been involved in the victims. And just please try to take some time off tomorrow evening in South Hutch Community Center to attend this. It doesn't take very long, and I think you will enjoy it.
Tom, I think our photographer wants to... And this will bring us to item four on our agenda, public comment on items not on the agenda. And with that, I'd ask if there's anyone who has something to come forward, state your name, address for the record, and please try to hold your comments to five minutes.
I'm Ralph Jansen. My address is 8905 East 69th, Beulah, Kansas. And this has to do with a new bridge that's going on Beulah Haven Road. The community there has signed a petition. I have 43 signatures on that petition, and I'd like to read what that petition is about. It's called Flood Mitigation Petition. "We, the undersigned citizens, would like to present our concern to the Reno County Commission regarding flooding of the Little Arkansas River on the Beulah Haven Road south of Beulah, and those properties located along the river to the east and the west of that bridge. If Beulah Haven is raised, if the Beulah Haven Road is raised, it would seem that this would create a dam effect that could endanger our homes and property. Has adequate research been done to determine what that effect would be? With the planned replacement of the bridge south of Beulah, our concern is also with the debris that is blocking the free flow of the river and how this debris could be removed. We would submit a request that a funding grant be requested for the county or township to facilitate this removal for at least three miles east and three miles west of that bridge. Most residents do not have a way to move trees and large logs which have fallen into the river basin. The river needs optimum flow to allow the most possible water to pass through it, thus preventing further backup of water. With the river being at a low flow now due to the drought, this would be a good time to carry out such a plan. If nothing is done to clean out the river basin and the culverts, the result could be disastrous." And I'm talking about some basements being flooded, probably. Included in this petition, there are some photos of that road where the low spot was, and the river was going over that, and it was stopping the road from people accessing that. There's a picture of culverts and that that are blocked, and they're still blocked. There's a lot of things that need to be done. And I also have a section that shows of the plat of the Madura and the Little River plat also. And I've outlined that river. And it does a lot of snaking right in that area that I'm talking about. So that means that it's slowing down, and you're going to have a lot of blockage. I've lived on that river for 77 years, and I've seen two 100-year floods in that time. One when I was about 10 or 12, and in 2019. In 2019, we had 28 inches of rain in two months, and we had four floods, one right after another that year. And you can just look at Arkansas and what's happening down there. It's unpredictable what's going to happen. And we're in a drought now, but you never know when it's going to turn into a flood. So I'm just concerned how, you know, when they survey for that road, how much they're going to raise that road. Because if we raise that road any higher than the 100-year flood, we're asking for trouble. And that's all I have to say. I need to hand this to somebody. I'm not sure.
I would hand it to...
Thank you.
With that, I thank you for your comments. I'm sure that various things will be taken into consideration at the point of time when we actually have a project started and going. So thank you for your time. Anyone else? Seeing none. Item five on our agenda, determine additions or revisions to the agenda. It's been brought to my attention that we, at the end of our meeting the other week, we talked about having a study session instead of for solar, a solar discussion in the unzoned area of Reno County. And it has since turned up on the agenda as an item. And several commissioners, department heads, and others feel that we should actually have a study session before it comes before the meeting for a vote. So I would ask that item, I have to get the page turned here. Item nine, which is solar regulations discussion in the unzoned area, be taken off the agenda and moved to a study session immediately following adjournment of this meeting. Do we need a consensus, or does that do it? Are we satisfied with that? Then make that change, please. Any other items on the agenda somebody else might want to do something with? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion. Number six on our agenda is our consent agenda, and seeing no changes there, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I?
Motion to accept a consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion anybody wants to do on any of the items before we vote? Seeing none. Cindy, would you help us out, or we got... Who's running the show today?
I'll do the button. How's that? Commissioner Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Winger.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner.
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll move to item seven A, old business items, and Clint Nelson, well, let's see, Brush Up Reno County, yeah, that'll be Clint. Yeah, you're already there. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Clint Nelson, CEO of Interfaith Housing. Appreciate you having me back on your agenda again today. So I'm here today to express our desire to continue to operate this program that we've coined as Brush Up Reno. I believe we went through this a little bit in detail a couple of weeks ago. Commissioner Parks back with us today, so I would like to just reiterate that this house painting program that's countywide did not previously exist before two years ago. So it's, in theory, modeled off of the Brush Up Hutch program with quite a few modifications. And what we found, you can see the last two years of investment, $66,000 and $59,000, those are outside of Hutch proper. So those are your rural residents participating in this type of opportunity. Just kind of a short version, it's 50, up to $1,500 of credit at our local Sherwin-Williams. We partnered with Sherwin-Williams. We've intentionally, by design, kind of eliminated some of those typical grant regulations and barriers that would prevent homeowners from wanting to take the time to apply. I know last, last time we discussed this, we kind of ended on the point of creating an income limit. I do apologize. I should have presented this in my demonstration two weeks ago, but what you're looking at now is a proposed application. Our application for this program is in the form of a door hanger. So that's our marketing, that's our outreach. We'll sweep a block or an area of town and try to drum up some applicant interest. We have not utilized an income restriction on this program. In its place, what we've done is verify the property value. And so what you see in this modified application for the program is those two participation questions. To the best of your knowledge, is your home valued at or below $150,000? And then the second question being, are you current with your property taxes? Very low barrier, and that's by design. The objective is to paint some of these houses that are blights in our communities, not necessarily to restrict participation. I did not come back here today with some specific income limits and qualifiers. I do believe that, in my opinion, really works against the intent of this program. Also adds a lot of administrative back office work. When you're consistently playing with the same procedures, and Fair Housing says if you're going to verify all of the household income for this applicant, you do it for the other applicant. So we'll spend hours chasing down pay stubs and asset verifications for, you know, a program that I am, in my personal opinion, really doesn't need that sort of restriction. So what I'm asking for again is an allocation from the county to allow us to continue this program. There is no other readily available funding source. I would be very discouraged to see this program not continue to be funded. It is a way for us to show up for the smaller rural communities, to be there, to be present, to offer something, and hopefully continue to build that relationship. And like I said, be present for the Silvias and the Turons and the Abbevilles. So it's just dollar for dollar, it really yields some amazing results. And then, you know, aside from the investment for the supply and paint product, they also engage with our staff, and we're able to kind of take a deeper look at the property condition, hopefully even link them up with some other resources that might be available. So it's a program we really want to continue with. I do believe the city of Hutchinson will continue to fund it locally for Hutchinson. And so I'm here in front of you today, asking that you fund a program that would be countywide. And I would stand for questions. Commissioner Hirst, you probably noticed I revised the budget a little bit.
I'll start something, okay?
Yes, sir.
Like I said at our last meeting, I really like the program. But, you always have that but involved in this. But we told everyone when we received the ARPA funds that it was a one-time influence, inflection of money, and that not to expect any further funds because this was a federal program that came out to each city and county. You mentioned just a minute ago that Hutchinson would probably continue this program. I think that if any rural cities would see the benefit of this, which they very, they should see the benefit, that maybe they should do like Hutchinson does, and each individual city support the program. We're doing a lot of new things since the ARPA funds came out with regard to attraction of people moving in, as well as improvements with some tax deductions, tax rebates on improvement of property if they increase a certain percentage of valuation. And I think that's probably where, in my opinion, the county needs to stop at, that we have told all the others. And I brought this question up at our quad-county meeting. And the other counties had not indicated that they would increase funding out of the taxpayers' money above and beyond the ARPA funds. And so that's my comments. While I love the program, I think it's great, but I think maybe the, since you mentioned the communities being involved in this, and we see the funds that were provided in these different communities, that maybe all 15, 16 communities outside of Hutchinson could benefit from this program, and that they need to partake of the program rather than the county. Any other comments?
When we received the ARPA money, was there an ARPA money ear tag for this project?
So there was. The ARPA funding was what allowed us to experiment with this countywide. We've never received any direct funding from the commission.
But the money from the ARPA?
Correct.
And that, I mean, was that ear tag towards this program?
It was. Within the ARPA budget, we, there was a line called micro projects. So it was outside of your major renovation projects, and brush-up programs or projects were captured in that micro project line.
What else was in that besides brush-up?
What else besides brush-up?
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Anything, anything at or below, I think the threshold was like $2,500 per project. So we had wheelchair ramps, we had some accessibility needs for seniors, we had some general emergency responses when a storm took a tree down on a house. So they, yeah, it was more emergency crisis type response work, as well as these smaller investments through the brush-up program. It was kind of, it was a catch-all. And again, the intent of the micro projects were to provide resources and lower the barrier for participation.
And I mean, how much, how much that ARPA money went to these macro projects?
The, in this specific brush-up, we've got your two The, in this specific brush up, we've got your two years there of actuals. On the agenda page, it's sixty-six thousand in two thousand twenty-three and fifty-nine and change, fifty-nine thousand for two thousand twenty-four. So that, those are actuals for the brush up Reno program. So we're asking for slightly less than, than what's actually been, been utilized. Yeah, amazing result. We didn't know whether or not the small communities would, would buy into this sort of program, and they have. So I, Commissioner Hirst, I appreciate what you're saying. I think that's an avenue that we can explore. Do I feel like that'll bring us to the same level of funding? You know, time will tell, but certainly we can look into that. We're not necessarily looking for more work right now, but we would love to see this program continue.
And I appreciate all Interfaith Housing does for, for Reno County.
Thank you.
Well, I kind of concur with Commissioner Hirst, Clint, on the fact that, you know, when I came to the board, I was kind of adamantly against some of the funding going in some of the directions it did. I, I had some gives there that I went ahead and went along with it. And I think some good work actually happened out of that. But I, I think he's probably correct that there needs to be some buy-in from some smaller communities if that's your target. So that they will continue to fund us if they'd like to do that. But I remember back years ago, and I probably said this in a meeting before, I was on the board for several years of Interfaith before I went to work for them in a transition when I was moving out of town, clear back under John Scott years ago. But that was one of the programs that they kind of had going at the time. They didn't have near as much going as Interfaith has going on today, was painting distressed homes. And most of that was all done, I assume, probably still was volunteer help, and it was done with donated paints. I mean, and supplies. And I don't know whether that's easy enough to even get your hands on anymore. Those materials are quite expensive. I get that. Because I still do a lot of that stuff myself. But I mean, there was a lot of sweat equity put into things by homeowners and stuff. And I, and I hope that's a buy-in that you can do if they're capable of doing that. Sometimes you have people that are not capable of helping on their own home. But, but I was just thinking back at that, that was really on mission for Interfaith at the time. And I know it's kind of, if you want to use the word evolved from there. But I think going back to your roots a little bit might be a good thing. And try to rekindle some of that because I think that's, that was really the, the start of things back then. And so I, you know, I don't see funding this. But we're, I will say this, we're in the works of some things combined with the city that if, if it works out in the future, that might be something to pitch in the program we're working on. That we could use some funds out of a particular program we're looking at to, to help some of these entities do some of that stuff. So I don't know that it'll, it'll shape up like that, but I just, I do appreciate what you're doing. But I just don't know that I'm a, you know, real buy-in for this because of those reasons. There've been an awful lot of money spent on some things and so.
I appreciate that. Did you, anybody else have anything just that they want to add? With that, you're, let's get this straight. And then we are being asked to either fund this or not fund it. So with that in mind, do I hear a motion?
Well, I'm going to throw a motion out to deny approving your presentation. The, the agreement with Interfaith as presented this morning, no, no personal agenda, nothing there at all. I just, that's, that's the way I feel on this one. I'm gonna do that, so.
I was second to motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Not seeing any. Can you help us out?
Commissioner Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent.
Yes.
Commissioner Winger.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Last thing, we're still here. When you, when you need our assistance to address some of your housing issues, we're, we're here and available. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Maybe we can find a way to make the, present to the cities and see how involved they want to be.
Yeah, I, I hope so. It's all about scale and volume and, and pace, trying to stay ahead of the problem. So we're here if you guys need assistance with the housing issues. Thank you.
And as we meet, as the Commissioners, we meet with our individual cities, we can bring this up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And have them contact you for further information. Does that sound reasonable?
Oh, sounds reasonable. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, moving on. But our item eight A on our, on our agenda. And that will be a presentation by Liz Lutz on, with the Reno County Conservation District.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Liz Lutz. I'm the district manager for the Reno County Conservation District. Commissioner Hirst, Bogner, Parks, you guys have kind of seen this before. So I apologize if it's a little repetitive, but I thought it was a really great way to introduce ourselves to our new Commissioners. So the first thing that I really want to emphasize about who we are and what we do, we're a voluntary, non-regulatory program. Producers come to us willingly looking for, whether it be technical assistance or financial assistance. We have both options available. We're governed by a local board. I have a couple of our board members with us this morning. That's, it's really kind of a cool, you know, we have these leaders in soil health that are providing kind of a local context, you know? These farmer to farmer, these guys have tried and failed and had successes and are able to kind of, you know, guide other, their neighbors and, and what they've actually had success with. It's all volunteer or for the, for the board members anyway. I'm going to dive into some numbers here. I want to talk about your return on your investment. So last year in two thousand twenty-four, the county allocation was fifty thousand dollars. And that allowed us to procure a thirty-four thousand dollar state from the, or match from the state. And then just the outcome that you get in return is just incredible. I'm going to start by talking about the Cheney Lake Watershed. If you're not familiar with them, we are the grant holders for the Cheney Lake Watershed. They are a locally led and nationally recognized program. Their main goal is to protect the Cheney Lake water supply. We work very closely with them. They have dollars that can be paid out to farmers and ranchers in their footprint for BMPs or best management practices. We work really closely with them for hosting like information and education days. I really encourage you to come. I know you've probably seen some emails from Howard Miller, our outreach coordinator with the Cheney Lake Watershed. Commissioner Bogner, we saw you recently at the Water Law. We appreciate you being there. Just, just a really cool program. And if you have any more questions, please, please, please stop in at the USDA Service Center and come talk to us. I'll let Howard and Chloe talk your ear off there. I want to talk about state cost share a little bit. That's kind of my program. So that comes through the Division of Conservation. Last year, they allocated over fifty-one thousand dollars to Reno County. So if you're not familiar with state cost share, we're wrapping up those projects now here this spring. But what that process kind of looks like is producers come in and apply. There's a ranking process. It goes to board approval. Once they have a signed contract, they can start doing the work. Once they provide receipts for the work that's done, then there's a checkout to make sure that it's, you know, meeting the specifications that are outlined in the contract. And then, you know, they have time to fix it, you know, if it doesn't meet specs. And then they will receive a reimbursement check from the Division of Conservation. And that, the money goes directly to those producers. Like it does not come, we don't touch it. We just handle the contracts. But it sounds, you know, okay, all those steps, like what's the purpose of that? You know, we're just trying to ensure that we're not, we're not wasting money. We want to make sure that those dollars are going towards programs that are actually going to have long-term health, soil health effects. And we want our producers to be successful, definitely, but we really want to protect our natural resources too. And all that work that's done, whether it's, you know, wells being drilled or fences being built, dirt contractors, all of that stuff has to be done. And if the producers can't do it themselves, they're hiring these local contractors. And so, you know, there's a benefit to the Reno County right there. At the, in the narrative that I sent you, at the bottom, there was a list of all the local contractors that get sent out the door with producers who are looking to find, you know, contacts to, to get that done. Kind of a big number on there, NRCS. Talk about them a little bit here on my next slide. So if you're not familiar with NRCS, that's the Natural Resources Conservation Service. They are a federal program and they are required to have a relationship with us, the Conservation District, in order to operate on private property. We're kind of the local component. We provide administrative support to NRCS in exchange for their technical assistance, and they provide us some technology. We work very closely together. They do some of the checkouts on state cost share. And then we share office space in the USDA Service Center in South Hutch. I could talk for hours about this slide, but I won't. These are just some examples of some conservation practices. There's high tunnels and cross fencing and crop, relay cropping and cover crops. And just if you have questions about this, please stop in. I would love to tell you more about some of the actual practices that we do. But just for time purposes today, I won't get into that. Obviously, we care about farmers and ranchers, but that's not all we care about. Urban agriculture is really on the rise. We kind of touched on this a little bit last year, but the, the high tunnels are a big thing. Like home setting is kind of coming, become kind of a thing right now. People want to raise their own food and know where it comes from. And there's dollars available for these high tunnels. Another thing that I didn't include on here, but septic systems is something that we have money for. There is a pool of money that can go towards replacing failed systems with, with in-state cost share. Here's just some of the conservation resources we have. There's a no-till drill and a crop roller and some grass drills. Those are available to, you know, people who are trying to fulfill their contracts, but they don't necessarily have the implements to get it done. So why we receive funding from the county, as I kind of mentioned before, the way this was kind of structured was that we could get the, we could ask the county commissioners for their allocation to secure our match from the state. And then I have some wording here that I pulled from Kansas statutes. I just, I just thought it was some cool wording. It's hereby declared as a matter of legislative determination that the farm and grazing lands of the state of Kansas are among the basic assets of the state and that the preservation of these lands is necessary to protect and to promote the health, safety and general welfare of its people. Just thought that was kind of heavy. Getting back to some of the numbers here, I've got a couple of different documents for you. On, on the right-hand side, so this is the document that we submit to the Division of Conservation every year. If you look down at this bottom cash on hand, it looks pretty inflated right now. But I want to direct your attention to this technical assistance funds. So we have leveraged opportunities. We found grants through National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, the Division of Conservation and Kansas Association of Conservation Districts to kind of get boots on the ground, get these actual positions where people are doing the checkouts and out there in the field. And any dollars that are not spent on those positions when those contracts are up, they get paid back. So if you look over the long term, it's really quite a tight budget. And then on this side, there's kind of a more streamlined version here, kind of to talk about. It, it kind of doesn't include some of those dollars. But like you can kind of see what we're actually operating on is, is not nearly that inflated. I had this slide in before and I put it in again because I just, I really want to reiterate the return on your investment, fifteen thousand percent for your initial fifty thousand dollar investment. You know, this is, this is really a program that is beneficial to the county on so many levels. I kind of talked about information and education. We have a really great board right now. Our board members are doing a lot as far as producer field days. You know, they are, they're out there. They're talking. They're learning. They're providing forums for experts in their fields to, to come in and, and, and teach us. And one thing that we do in, it's previously been early June, or excuse me, early July, and we're talking about moving it to late December, but our legislative breakfast. I know a couple of you have been able to come. I really encourage the rest of you to try to make it. It's a great way to keep up with like what we've been doing and kind of what's happened over the years. And we bring in producers to talk and you kind of get some firsthand, you know, with their experience. The Cheney Lake Watershed hosted Roger McCowen for Water Law. Last year he came and talked about fence law. It was really, really cool to see how many people were interested in that. Yeah, so long story short, you know, there's benefits more to just farmers and ranchers. The, the conservation practices, they prevent erosion, save dollars on road drainage and cleanup efforts, prevent flooding and save dollars spent on flood control, improves the local environmental quality and economic growth and really just kind of maintains the local tax base here in Reno County. And as I'm, I'm sure you know, ag is really a pillar of economy here in Reno County. And I hope you will continue to support our efforts to bring both financial and technical assistance to Reno County. Any questions?
Obviously, the city of Wichita uses the water out of the Cheney Lake for their water supply.
Yeah.
What's their contribution to our watershed?
So the Cheney Lake Watershed, they have money that comes from KDHE through EPA. And then they get a match from the city of Wichita as well. And could I invite Chloe to come talk? She's, she's the program or the project coordinator for the Cheney Lake Watershed.
I know, I think that slide is probably up here again. I'm not sure how you get back to the.
Chloe, would you just give your name?
Yeah, sorry, Chloe Gearing, and I'm the project manager for the Cheney Lake Watershed. And so all of the Cheney Lake Watershed staff are technically Conservation District staff. And so all of that personnel expense has to pass through the Reno County Conservation District budget. And so that is why you see that. And that is some of what Liz was talking about, how it looks like it inflates the budget. But technically, all of the costs for our project is paid for either by the city of Wichita through NIFL funds or through EPA three nineteen funds. So there is no dollars coming from the county. We actually pay the Reno County Conservation a small stipend every month to handle all of our personnel expenses, the, the processing, the HR processing. So that piece is, it's certainly a compliment. We serve Reno County largely, the, the bulk of the contributing acres in the watershed are actually in Reno County. So I would say eighty percent on a typical year of the conservation practices that we do, they're really done primarily in Reno County. But we do serve six hundred and thirty-three thousand acres over five counties. So it, it does go out there. But I would say where we concentrate our efforts is probably more so in Reno County. Any other questions about how we're funded or what we're doing? I know Liz commented earlier about our upcoming workshops and our activity. We are doing one tomorrow. I'll put a plug in for that. Jafir is going to be in here from North Dakota. He's a soil health expert and I think we have about seventy people registered already. So it's going to be a great event. You're welcome to attend. It's going to be at the Pleasant View Activity Center, just out of Pleasant View behind the Dutch Kitchen. So anybody interested, certainly welcome to attend. Starts at ten AM.
Any questions? When is your conservation tour? Have you set a date yet? Usually have one every year, if I remember right.
We have done them in the past. We don't typically do them every year, but we are happy to do one as interest permits.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we, we don't have one slated. I think if we were to do one this year, we'd probably be looking at September-ish. That's typically when we have done it in conjunction with the Conservation District.
I meant the Conservation District.
Yeah.
I just, I just mentioned and asked that because I attended one of those and I found it very interesting and learning about exactly where our funds go and how it's utilized. And as well as just being educated on how those funds were actually being used and to see the byproduct, byproduct of putting that money out there. That's. Ron, come out anytime. We'll come, we'll give you a personal tour.
We do that regularly. I know in a couple of weeks, we're going to do her through the watershed with an aide for Marshall's office. And that is always a possibility. We did that last spring. We did that last spring with Ron Estes, came out to view some of the practices and meet some, with some producers to see what we're doing. So really, within a couple of days, we could source a producer and a site to, to see some good practices. That's certainly a possibility, but we could do something more formal too, if that's a request.
I just didn't know how often you did it. I thought maybe it was every year, so. I know, just to, just to see it in practice made a difference to me because some of it was new to me.
If there's, yeah, I would like to thank you for, for your presentation. If there's nothing, nothing more. You, you did a very good job of supplying us with plenty of reading material. And, but I will say that our family has utilized a lot of these, these programs over the years, probably three generations worth. My sidekick over here pointed to the one picture. We've been lucky to be awarded Kansas Banker Association Award in our family two times recently and, and years ago, both grandpas on both sides were awarded for their efforts. And there have been some kind of new experimental things done on our farms to, to help further savings, like with how the engineers stack the blocks and structures and stuff to save materials, and, and some of those experiments were done on our farms. And I can see the changes on the farms, and it makes a lot of differences to the income those farms produce. So her figures and, and return to the community have a lot of feeling for me because, because I see how they work, like Ron pointed out, and I know where we write the checks to, local contractors. These local businesses, that money stays in Reno County, doesn't go other places, which means it doubles, triples, because they've got to keep up their equipment and run their businesses, and they use other businesses. So with that, I'll quit preaching, and, and if you're done, we'll go on. Next item would be, thank you for your presentation, though, I will say. Item B, 8B, Greater Hutch Economic Development. Are we ready for that then?
All right, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Tuftel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and today I'm here seeking your support for, again, for our Greater Hutch Economic Development Partnership for Reno County, the Economic Development Division of the Chamber. And I have some of my staff here with me today. Thank you for your long-term support for this program, and let me make sure I can get the mouse to work. Here we go. All right. So the five key pillars of our program of work under Greater Hutch involve business retention, expansion, and recruitment, as well as working to promote the real estate offerings in Reno County, and lately to develop some new sites to help us compete for new projects in the future. And more recently, a lot of work around workforce development that we'll talk about, as well as community capacity building, which could be anything from working on some new pilot programs with the county, to supporting grant programs that we administer related to childcare, and also support for the housing initiatives across Reno County. Working in these divisions, we have with me today Katie Fallon, who is our Economic Development Project Manager, Seth Farley, who is our Marketing Manager, and Lauren Storm, who works in Business Retention, Expansion, and Workforce Programming. So as we get into some of these programs, these are, these are the boots on the ground that do this work every day. A few examples in 2024 of projects that we worked on in our Business Retention and Expansion Program, are companies that you would know here in our community that are growing. Companies like Gun Bros., who recently broke ground on a new facility here in Hutchinson, Haven Steel, who's in, expanding in Haven, Superior Holdings, operating here in Hutch, Collins Bus in South Hutch, as well as Tyson Foods, as well as the groundbreaking for the YMCA, and in a few weeks, the groundbreaking for the new APAC shares regional headquarters. Those projects announced over the last year equate to about 400 new jobs expanding in our community and about 30 million in new investment. But that doesn't really tell the complete picture of retention and expansion because Lauren conducts an annual business conditions survey that goes out to businesses, and that helps her understand businesses that need our attention. And so there were about 26 other, what we would consider confidential business interactions that Lauren had over the last year that helped businesses with growth or pain points, and pointing them to the right direction, but they don't all end up in announcements for the community. But they're definitely very valuable to the companies that need those resources. And it's important to note too, that about 35% of the retention and expansion projects were outside of the city limits of, of some of the communities we've mentioned. So it's definitely having an impact across all of Reno County. Probably the biggest announcement last year was the Evergy announcement, and this is going to result in about a billion-dollar new investment. We hope to see it start coming out of the ground next year, but it was probably one of the more landmark announcements that we made in 2024, and we're excited to see that happen on McNew Road very soon. I mentioned that we do things to promote the real estate of Reno County, and we do that a few different ways. We subscribe to a database called LOIS. It's Location One Information System that key properties are uploaded in. We also partner with the local MLS, and it feeds into a subscription service that we have with Zoom Prospector that then is a nationwide database of real estate to make sure our message is out there across the country. And then we also have some key properties present right there on our greaterhutch.com website. And from time to time, we take an even more granular approach. That block-by-block snapshot was just one piece of a real estate study that we did as a team to look at how do we infill vacant properties in communities. So a lot of, of attention to real estate. Workforce development, we've really put this program on steroids in the last three years, and doing signing days to help kids that want to go into technical trades be celebrated for those decisions, working with the Community College and our career and tech ed partners around apprenticeship referrals, but also participating in career fairs and making sure that young people are aware of their careers in our community. We have a job portal on our website, and Reno County uses that regularly. We also provide $10,000 a year in funding to the Boys and Girls Club in a partnership with some of their programs, including Up Next and Epic Skills. Today, we're doing a workforce roundtable around micro internships in a partnership with Hutch Community College, which is a great program to get students that are here in our community experiences working in micro internships. And it's really easy to get into that program and very affordable, as well as Career Quest, and then some onsite job fairs that we hold at the Chamber. You've heard us talk about Career Quest before. It's now in its third year, so it seems like it's just, you know, continuing like it has in the past. But this is an important impact because every sixth grade student in Reno County, year over year, is learning about jobs here and learning about why we want them to invest in their talents and then stay here or come back here when they want to enter into their career. So we have 15 schools that have been part of the last year's project. We've had about 20 businesses that have done onsite business tours for these students. And then we do some mega days, and Reno County is actually part of some of those mega days. So I really want to focus on, in the fall, we do an education day. In the spring, we've done healthcare day. We also in the past have done a manufacturing day and ag day. And then coming up in May, and I actually have the date on here wrong, I think it's May 7th, we have Public Service Day, and there, students are going to get to learn about all the careers that make our county and our cities successful. We also, as you know, you approved a pilot program with us last year for Superior Boiler as a relocation incentive pool that is helping them attract workers to Reno County. And when I put this together, we were at four new employees recruited, but actually, I think as of just this week, we have a fifth that have been recruited to Superior Boiler under this program, and they're very grateful for that partnership, and we're doing, doing the administration of it. I mentioned that we go out to a lot of the job fairs. We did one with HCC last week, EZDAC previously. And then last year, we launched some workforce roundtables that businesses in the community can get involved in and learn about other things that are kind of pain points or, or opportunities for businesses. Learning about what we're doing as a county in childcare, learning about export assistance that comes in from our Department of Commerce, learning about what you all are doing in partnership with the housing study with communities, and then learning about some other networks of manufacturing resources that they can tap into. Last month, or in February, I'm sorry, they learned about Jag K. Actually, going on right now today, Jag K is putting on a, a internship for middle schoolers in, across the state. It's being held right here in Hutchinson, and we have folks on the ground that are helping with putting that event on. As I said, today, we have a workforce roundtable that's focused on micro internships. Next month, it will focus on our countywide economic development strategic plan, and we continue to work on programming throughout the year to get our workforce partners around the table collaborating. Earlier this year, you approved the Make My Move investment that was a new pilot program for us. Actually, you approved that in November. It launched in January. I am proud to say that we are on that platform actively now promoting Reno County to movers across the country. And the goal was to recruit 10 remote workers and their families by the end of 2026. Currently, in our pipeline, we have 30 movers looking at our community. About 15 of those have actually gone through all of the approval process and the vetting that has to go on behind the scenes to make sure they're a vetted mover with, with a W-2 income coming from another place, and then some of the background checks that need to happen. And then Katie takes them through the process of helping them learn about our community and interviewing them and talking with them about what questions they may have. There are actually two that have gone fully through that program and one that is fully committed to moving. They're actually working on the sale of their home. I believe it's in Seattle, Washington. And as soon as their home sells, then they will actually make that move. So it's starting to pay off. It's just in its infancy stage, but we're excited to see so many movers already looking at Reno County. So I mentioned some of these programs. We really have launched a lot of new, what I would consider pilot experiments over the last year. But another one of those that I had not mentioned already was a physician recruitment event that we helped Hutchinson Regional Healthcare System with back in December. So over three days, we helped them with a recruitment event for new physicians looking at our community. Some of those have already made commitments to move here, and it's working so well that they're going to do another physician recruitment event this June. It's another three-day event. So we hope you'll get involved and attend some of the events. It's also coinciding with Hutch Regional's 50th anniversary, so a lot happening on their campus that first weekend in June. We've also been part of the Love Kansas Pilot Community Program over the last year, and I'm not sure if that's going to have sustainable funding from the state, but it's definitely helped us be, it's just another part of our talent attraction work. And we're actually rolling out a new talent attraction landing page as a part of that this year. These are just a few of the things. We also invest some of the dollars that you invest in us in state and regional initiatives, like being part of Team Kansas, helping us promote to site selectors across the country, making decisions. We're in a new partnership with Site Location Partnership that's taking our message on the road to some specific trade shows around the country. And then we also invest in the Greater Wichita Partnership as a regional effort to help broaden the pipeline of projects looking at us. We've also been doing some administration of grants. So we're in the second year of our base grant funding that's helping us with the build-out of the new industrial site and helping plan for infrastructure to help serve that site in the future. We aren't stopping there. We want to look at what the next five-year vision for Reno County as an economic development countywide holistic plan could look like. And so many of us have been convened around the table in recent weeks around what a countywide economic development strategy should look like for the next five years. And we've been interviewing firms to help us with that work, but partnering with Reno County, Cities in the County, the Community Foundation, Startup Hutch, the Chamber in Greater Hutch, as well as Hutch Community College. And we will actually be meeting this afternoon to hopefully make a decision on awarding a contract that is going to help us work on this ED strategic plan for the next five years, really helping identify all of our roles there. You have a lot of partners that you work with that touch economic development, and this plan will really help us kind of get clarity around all of the, the work and rowing together and getting all the stakeholders' input in that plan. And we're going to do that through focus groups, and we've identified a list of some potential focus groups that I have listed here. I won't go into reading all of it. You guys can do the reading, but we really do want to make this a holistic effort and get people across Reno County excited about economic development work. So with that, I do appreciate you have, in the last year, been a $50,000 funding investor in our work. That work goes alongside the work of City of Hutchinson, South Hutchinson, and our private sector. So the bulk of the funding for our program does, we raise from the private sector. It'll be part of this next five-year capital campaign. But we, as any organization, we've staffed more. We have additional expenses related to employee benefits. So we have asked for a modest increase of $5,000 additional next year for a total of $55,000 in requests from Reno County. And just appreciate the work that you do to support this and helping us work together to grow Reno County. So thank you for your past investment, and I hope that continues. And I'd stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for the report on the Make My Move. That's kind of exciting to hear that it's actually working, so, yeah. And have that many people interested in it, so that's a good report for that.
I'm excited about it, too.
Appreciate the rest of it too, but I was excited to see here whether there's activity on that yet or not.
We weren't really sure right out of the gate how quickly it would gain traction. So I too was surprised and pleasantly surprised, Commissioner. And I've asked Katie a little bit of demographic information on where the movers so far are looking at us from, and it's predominantly from about five states, many of them west of here, Colorado, Washington, California, Arizona. So a mix, but definitely getting some attention for Reno County from it. So thank you for that investment, too.
Yeah, good, thank you.
One, it's not just out of state. I sent a person to you that's trying to start a business here in Hutch that there's a need, and they're trying to fulfill that. And they said they were in contact with you, and you guys were working with them, so.
Good.
Anxious to see this business get off the ground and having an announcement later from them. I told them I wouldn't say anything about it, but other than, I do appreciate, like I said, everything that you guys are doing to make it where people want to come here and participate in, in our environment that we have here and, and grow with us. So thank you.
It's a great place, and we love those referrals. Keep those coming. Thank you.
I will plug your retention program too, though I do appreciate that, trying to get people educated and get them to stay here. Far too often, our college has been noted in the past for educating people to go somewhere else, and if we can get a retention out of high school or the college, even technical, it'd be a big, big deal because we suffer for some, some things in health, and that's, I think that's a good program going forward. I just wanted to say that too. So I don't comment positively to you often enough, and so I make amends today, I guess, and anyway.
Well, thank you for that. I think, you know, sometimes economic development, people believe it's all about recruitment, when in reality, 95% of what we do is about helping those that are here, stay here, and find opportunity here. So it, it takes all of it, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you for the time this morning, gentlemen.
Next item on the list would be a presentation by Startup Hutch.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think he's going to get my PowerPoint going, so bear with me. I'm Johanna Moore. I'm the current Chair of Startup Hutch. Just wanted to thank you all for bringing here this morning. We do have some board members here that are coming in support of the presentation. So a lot to get through, so we'll just kind of get going. So why entrepreneurship? And basically, I'm here to explain why we asked you to continue to support entrepreneurship in Reno County. Really, the first thing I'd want to talk about is that supporting entrepreneurship in Reno County is, it's more than just Startup Hutch. We have a lot of community partners that we work with to make sure that we're able to help those entrepreneurs. Lots of partners that you can see on there. I'd say the, the partners in the other category are really just our local entrepreneurs. I think that a lot of what we do is helpful with a first-person experience and really finding out where the needs are in our community and those businesses. So basically, we're requesting funds for our first year in our new five-year action plan. This year, we've gathered impact data. We survey all of our clients annually. Over the last year, we surveyed about 100. Typically, Typically, we get responses that we're allowed to share publicly from 15 to 20 active borrowers. This year, we have response from eight, so again, most of those respondents are borrowers. So just from that, 13% of our clients, 2024 revenue was 5.1 million. So I think that's a big contribution to the economy of Reno County and just what our entrepreneurs are showing, especially with an investment of less than $100,000 for Startup Hutch, so. Some of our success stories and things that we do in the community, we have a monthly event that's a mingle event, it's Entrepreneurship Connections, just making a safe space for entrepreneurs to come together, to listen to experts, and to talk to other people in their industries and find out, you know, how are they combating different issues. We also host a monthly podcast series to promote local businesses and give them an opportunity to speak. We also try to foster a good online community, so we have engagement through an exchange, Facebook group, our social media, website, those different things. Just in an effort of time, we've also worked on some different things in the community. We've done a Business Builder Workshop that we've done in conjunction at the Chamber, giving people tools to try to retain the business, working through emergency transition, buying and selling a business, trying to help work with businesses to not just close, but keep those businesses alive and continuing on for the future of Reno County. We've also hosted a 12-week Entrepreneur Business Basics class. We did this last summer, just really trying to bring that work back, hopefully again in Reno County and with the city. This course has come to work in the county. We've been able to work with some of the smaller towns and bring some businesses to continue on again with that transition phase. And then honestly, entrepreneurship is a live experiment, so we consider it to be very active. We consider it to be something that we have to continually try to mold and shape as the changes come, and so we're continually trying to improve our work in that nature. So basically, this is our ask. I'd like the county to stick with us, stick with our SEEP group and with Startup Hutch and our new five-year action plan. You did fund us the last two years at the $75,000 level. We are going to ask again at the same level that we've been asking at since 2020 for Kind of our budget breakdown for that, for the request, really, we're just, I think this should be our last increase for a while. We're just trying to sustain. There were some funding opportunities that we got to participate in with K-State 105. That was a pilot program and experimental in nature, as is with entrepreneurship, and so those funds are not guaranteed to stay in the budget, so that's something to consider in there. And I guess I would just entertain any questions that Commissioners might have.
Anybody have anything or questions, comments?
I appreciate that. Very, very good report that we received. Fan of entrepreneurship in Reno County. Just a couple of things that I have noticed over the course of the year is when I see all the lists of the people that were involved, your partnerships and so forth, I only found four or five people from outside of Hutchinson.
Sure.
I don't know why that is, but maybe they didn't want to be involved. I don't know, but I have noticed that I would suggest that you look at being more out in the rural communities. I have asked how many times people see someone from Startup Hutch, and quite frankly, most of them are zero.
Yeah.
I would encourage that. I do have one question, since we're talking about this and since you're here.
Yep.
And talking about this, is where does the $35,000 that goes towards marketing, where is it, how is that utilized? Because I see there's others for transportation, for visits and so forth. Just curious of...
We work with some local partners for marketing. You'll have to bear with me to make sure I get the answer completely right. I'm the new chair and haven't been super in the budget, and Jackson is no longer with us, so I'm going to use my expertise and maybe even rely on Christopher a little bit. We work with community partners to help us with marketing, so that could be even just Baurcom, working with those programs with us, some commercials and things like that that we've done, just making sure that we're advertising. One thing to speak to the county piece, we did do some marketing with Coffee in the County. We partnered with that idea with the Chamber to try to make sure that we were in counties, and so those coffees would take place at a local business in different cities around the county, not in Hutchinson, to make sure that people knew who we were. I think that with a staff of one or two people, we struggle with making sure that people know who we are and that we're there. Our board is all volunteers, and so while we might be present at certain things, whether or not people know that we're also a representative of Startup Hutch might not always be known. So one thing that we do at a board level is we make sure that we try to keep our board diverse and do have other business partners that are in those local communities outside of Hutchinson to make sure that they can let us know of anything going on in those other cities, so we're mindful of that and making sure that we have people that are speaking to it. So we know that's something that we're trying to work towards and improve on, and so I'd say a lot of that is just coming from the board. I don't know if that answers your question well enough on marketing.
That's a start.
Okay.
I will tell you that because of my past experiences, you can still, the Startup Hutch can still get out into the county with one and two people.
Right. Yeah. Well, we're working to hire, and so hopefully with a new person in that role, we can make sure that we are making a really good effort to be sure that we're in the county more, so.
Good.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Christopher Acker, Program Administrator for Startup Hutch. One of the things that I've discussed before Jackson left Startup Hutch, one of the things that Jackson and I had been discussing was we created these events, like Coffee in the County, where we were going out to the county for our own events, and we found that those weren't necessarily the most effective for us in the counties, and what we've, we're working on changing our approach to that, to us going to county events, events that the counties are, the cities in the county are already putting on themselves their own events, and us having a presence there, so us showing up to their events instead of us coming in and bringing in our own. And so to be present at things like city parades or just anywhere that we could possibly set up a booth in a city to be present where the city already is, instead of expecting the city to come to our events that we're hosting. So that's one of the ways that we're working towards being more present out in the county.
Thank you. That helps. I think that will be a big improvement. And also, we have about three local newspapers. That is very economical to put a piece in every week, and because not everybody will spend time looking on the internet for Startup Hutch. And I've said this for three or four years, and it hasn't ever got done. Maybe the board thinks it's not worthwhile, but I think that would be, just be, have your name out there, and why pay a lot to a commercial company to advertise if it's not getting out in the whole county?
We have utilized the local newspapers in the past for specific events, such as our Entrepreneur Business Basics workshops. We'll advertise those in those papers to try and drum up more involvement in those programs, but I do take that comment to utilize those newspapers more effectively.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any.
I'd like to, on Ron's thing, if you had a list of events that you're going to and that would get passed on to us, I would be, I'd like to be a cheerleader for the RISA. So if I have an opening and I see an event, I'd like to have the opportunity to go, but if you had a way to pass that on to the county commissioners, I think that would be a good thing also, like you said, through the newspapers would be great. I also listen to local radio stations and things like that, so, and I know you have a limited budget, but even if you just sent out, you know, emails or text messages, that would be a good thing for me.
Yeah, I think we could definitely include that and make sure that we're letting you guys know what's going on and what you could maybe come and contribute to. I think that's a great idea that we could implement, so.
And to be able to visit some of these small businesses out there, just to find out where they're at.
Yeah.
And that way, they could see if there's an opportunity, because you've got great talent with regards to what can be utilized for business expansion and even creation, but maybe there's just stopping in and saying, hi, and hey, what can we, where do you want to go from here, or whatever.
Sure, yeah. I definitely think that's something that we can look at. I think with new leadership, it's an opportunity for a fresh start, and so I think that these comments help in that process as we work to hire somebody and go through that, to let them kind of know some expectations of boots on the ground, and especially getting their face out there so they know who people are and people know who they are, so I think we can definitely make sure that that's done, so.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for the presentation. Item nine has been moved, so item 10, monthly department reports. Andy, you're...
Correct. Excuse me. In the pack, it is our monthly reports for aging public transit, the appraiser, automotive, clerk, community corrections, communications, the DA, and emergency management. Anything in those reports that you have questions about? Okay. If not, the only other thing I had, just letting you know, you guys had approved the management intern for my office along with the City of Hutchinson, and we're doing interns, or I mean, we're doing interviews Friday morning, so if you guys wanted to stop by, feel free, but we should have a decision by sometime next week. Enrico and I will talk about who to choose, and, you know, I'll let you guys know.
How many have, how many interns?
Four. That's all I have.
All right. Item 11, county commission reports and comments. I believe we started with you last week, Richard. Start with... Well, I can do that. I can do that, if that's a request.
I have really nothing. I've had no complaints this two weeks. Things are going good. One small, but I think we got that resolved, and I don't believe there's anything really, really much going on.
I don't have a whole lot. Had a town hall the other night at Nickerson involving several communities to come out for our appraiser, Michael Plank. I'd encourage folks that they have more of them to come out to that, because a great deal of the inquiries I had over tax and appraisals came from a particular area that was pretty well represented there. And I talked to some of them prior to the meeting, before it got started, and they had a whole host of things that they wanted to basically challenge in the meeting and questions that they had, and as soon as Michael got done with his presentation, and throughout it, there was great interaction and questions, but I think it put some of that to bed, and people seen the actual differences between appraisal and taxes, and so it was a great thing. I wish more people would show up. Couple of things that the county's done in that regard. We had a little better turnout, but not what I'd like to have seen. I'd like to have seen a packed house. The more that information gets out there, I think that, I think it'd be good. It doesn't necessarily make it swallowable sometimes if you will for people, but, you know, the final is, is that this board has the authority to, you know, hold the taxes down and raise them, and so your appraisal doesn't have as much as you think to do with that, depending on certain factors. And so it was a great town hall. I appreciate those that were there. If we do another one, or somebody happens to do another one, I encourage the public to be there. It's a great thing to take and listen to, so.
Ron, you want to continue?
Oh, yeah. I attended, we had a K-96 Corridor Development Association Board Meeting this Monday, and I don't know how much the new Commissioners know about the K-96 corridor, but it was developed with Mays, Mount Hope, Haven, and South Hutchinson, and Sedgwick County and Reno County all going together, and it's evolved to where there's a lot more private funds, company funds being part of the budget process, and it's a very, very small budget. We do hire an executive director, which started out with Harlan Prittl, and now it's Kalene Hoog, and, but we had this meeting to develop, see where we wanted to go with K-96, it's been, and see what we could do to develop any way we can add value to those communities and those counties that it was developed for, and working in partnership with not only, it used to be GWDC, but Wichita Development, as well as our own Hutch Reno County Chamber of Commerce and how we'll work together. And it's done some good things. I think it can do some better things, and we can be a lot more partnership with the folks that can actually make things happen. I think probably one of the, one of the things was the new modular business in Haven. But anyhow, that's, I've attended Sylvia Antur on City Council meetings, and we'll be out there next Tuesday with the 14th, with bringing SCAD out to do some housing conversation with them, as well as their interest in doing a strategic plan program, so we'll see where that goes. All right? That's it.
Richard?
I've had a few emails, but not tremendous amount, but on the zoning and unzoning areas and what we're going to be discussing later out of session, but I've also, I work at the college in the bookstore. That was my retirement job, and I enjoy that, and it was kind of cool, as we were going through some of these reports, that the colleges, you know, partners with a lot of things that go on in this county. That being said, there is a lot of the Bo-Tech in keeping some of those people here. I always ask them if they're, you know, if they've got a job planned when I get to visit with them and stuff, so getting to see that, that's been pretty awesome. Now I'm going to get on my soapbox just a little bit, because we've had some experiences here lately as a family, and then I've just seen some things in the community and in the county also, just driving here and there, but I don't know what it would take to make people be more aware, but a red light at a stop sign or at a stoplight is not a suggestion. It is, does mean good stop. Just in the short area that I live and go back and forth to, I've seen in the last few weeks, two or three wrecks where somebody didn't see the stop sign or didn't see the stoplight, and it was bad enough where it took an ambulance, and that is just scary, because we're talking, you know, in-town speeds and not highway speeds. So please, please, if you're driving in the City of Hutch, or in the county, or in the state, you know, abide by the laws. They're there for safety. If it is a stop sign, that doesn't mean yield. That means you got to stop and pay attention, because there might be kids walking in the neighborhood, there might be, you know, somebody on a bike, and so just pay attention to that. But anyway, I do want to recommend, or not recommend, give a praise to our first responders, because I've seen them in action, and they do a wonderful job, so I do appreciate them. Thank you for letting me be on my soapbox.
All right, and I'll conclude this with a couple little comments that, as you know, I've talked about litter. Our winds have put down a few privacy fences. They landed up in my, in a little bit of rain, so they couldn't get rid of them where they should, so it's in my driveway, and it's my problem. So to a field. So to a field. Of course, the neighbors got the same problem a mile up the road, all on Worthington Don. So when I get on my soapbox about how we fund our, our landfill and keep it so that people don't have to pay every time they show up, got a little more experience yesterday along those lines. And the other thing, some of us attended the Quad County Meeting, and some very interesting conversation there about some things we'll be discussing later on. I'm not going to say a lot about it, but in a public meeting, I don't know what those counties, how, 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 how quiet they wanted the comments they made us to get some input from each other. But in our study session, I'll, I'll have some things to say there. And, but outside of that, I, I would encourage you with the, with the Conservation District to take advantage of, of some of their seminars. There's some, some of these guys are some of the best-known people in their fields in, in the country, and it's right here in Reno County for the taking. They even give you a meal. So, but, but anyway, and there again, I'll have some comments later on things I learned at those meetings. And with that, I'd say I'm finished with comments. If there's nobody else that's thought of something, I'd say let's adjourn this thing and reconvene for a study session in about five minutes after we take a little break. Ten? All right. All right. Good enough. We'll see you at 25 till. No.